All right, we're back from closed session. And we do have, we did have it on the agenda that public comment was going to be given or allowed after the closed session. So if it's okay with council, there's another public comment that'd like to be given. Is that, does anybody have an objection to letting that happen? Okay, great. The Cassandra Bermudas, go ahead and go up to the podium there in, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Cassandra Bermudas. I'd like to thank the Chair and the Mayor for, first of all, letting me speak on such short notice. So I believe that the proposition of a construction of a skate park in Bothell would be a great addition to our city, not only because the old one was taken down, but because it would help bring, help and bring people together. My school's motto is build, become, belong Bothell. And organization would be a big part of this project. So I believe that like with this, it can help bring the community, sorry, bring the community together. And I believe I speak for my friends when I say that skating has allowed me to like help, or has allowed me to get closer to people and helped me to exercise my social skills. Sorry. I think it'd be a great opportunity for more people to be involved and become closer to our community. A skate park in Bothell would be very helpful in making the youth more inclusive and physical activity as well. Kids nowadays, including myself, are really on their phones all the time, and I don't really see kids out in the parks and out playing as much as they used to. And it is to my knowledge that the original buyer of Lot A has backed out of the purchase. So I believe that this would be a good location for the skate park. And it's also really pretty close to Bothell Landing, so parking wouldn't be a problem. And with millions of skateboarders in the U.S. alone and only about 2,000 skate parks, we have a long way to go before our need for quality terrain is met, particularly considering how many of these existing skate parks are not suitable for skating. Yeah, I yield my time to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? Come on, you want to? No? Okay, thanks for, thanks for coming in. Next on our agenda is the remainder of the consent agenda, and I wrote down, we pulled A, the meeting minutes, we pulled 17-074, and AB 17-073 is our motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. There you go. Passes unanimously. So we'll start with, oh, you're gonna have your moment of personal privilege right after we got back from the closed session.
Doesn't matter, but I'll do it now that you've given me an entree.
Let's do it.
Okay. So I noticed that we got a email from Chief Cummings about Bothell's, the Police Department's annual 2016 award ceremony. And that got me thinking about, well, you know, how much I appreciate the service that our police and our fire department provide for the city. And if you don't, if you don't ever have any interaction with the Police Department, then you know by default how much work that they are doing for our community to keep us safe. And I just wanted to relay a little story. About a few weeks ago, a young man came into the pharmacy, and he was really agitated. And he was so agitated and confused that when he came to the counter, the technician couldn't understand him. And so she had to come back and get me. And I was able to determine from this young man that he was there at the pharmacy because he wanted his Hal-Dol. And if anybody knows what Hal-Dol is used for, it's an antipsychotic medicine. And I couldn't give it to him because the refill had been, had expired a long time ago. I couldn't even give him an emergency supply, but I wanted, I encouraged him to go to the walking clinic. Maybe he could see a provider there and, and get a new prescription for the medications he needs, maybe, you know, set on the path for additional help. So I saw him walk into the walking clinic, and probably about 10 minutes later, he walked out the door. You know, no prescription in hand, nothing. And I, and I thought to myself, wow, you know, he's, he's walking out into the community, and here, the healthcare system failed him. I hope that our public safety system doesn't. And I just, I can only imagine how many times our Police Department and our Fire Department interact with members of our community that have mental health issues and other issues. And so I feel safe in Bothell, and for that, I'm very grateful. And so I wanted to congratulate the annual 2016 Police Department Award winners. I think they're, they do a terrific job.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. So the first item that was pulled from consent is the item A, approval of February 2017 meeting minutes, and it was Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had two name corrections on page nine of the packet under visitor comment. The bottom two names are incorrect. So Lynn Germans is actually Lynn with one N, Stewart, S-T-U-A-R-T, German. And then Stephanie is Schrigger, S-C-H-R-I-G-E-R. And I, I think there was another speaker in there, Kristen Austin, so I don't know. I think, I don't, maybe it's Christine Allison. Anyway, I don't know if we can research that, but I, I know that Kristen Austin spoke at that meeting as well, and she's not listed.
I, I will research it, and if so, I'll add it.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
That was it.
All right, is there, so you want to make a motion then to make those?
Yeah, a motion to make name corrections.
Or a motion to pass the minutes with the name corrections?
Yeah, that.
Okay. It's moved by Deputy Mayor to make, pass the minutes with the main changes in the names, and seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on the motion? Place your vote. Passes unanimously. Next item pulled from consent was AB 17-073. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you. So on this particular item, we are potentially selling a right-of-way, we're vacating part of a street at the request of a property owner. And I had a question about what the applicant was offering, which was $14,000 versus what it is appraised at, and why, why there is state law and local law that suggests that we sell at 50% appraisal. And, and then finally, I'm wondering if there's some other way that we would be able to receive compensation, because I would imagine that there, they would use the additional square footage to either add a unit or, you know, I would imagine just to add a unit. And so I was thinking that when, if the city is, is thinking about selling right-of-way, when we, when we do sort of a give like that, and, you know, could we use that as a mechanism, for example, to, you know, have an affordable housing unit as a part of that deal, as opposed to just a straight cash transaction?
So you guys do have Mr. Feen up here?
So in, in terms of the, the first part about why the statute reads that way, I don't know. I can research some legislative intent behind that and get back to you. But the Bothell Municipal Code mirrors the state requirement. So I don't have an answer as to why that exists the way it does. Regarding what, what else they could do, I don't have enough knowledge of what their plans are to be able to comment.
And as far as, as far as the affordability component, I don't, we don't currently have any regulations about that on the books. We can certainly speak with them about it and see if they would be willing, but there isn't a current code that requires an affordable element that I'm aware of.
Our perception is it's a very small piece. It actually aligns the street more effectively, and it's, it's not, oh, Don's standing up as well to help us. And so the value, for the city, it has very little value, and the ability, I mean, it's a, I believe it's 13, is it 13 townhomes?
13 homes, right.
And so whether it slightly improves access, or maybe a little bit of extra green spray space, yes, it adds value to the overall project, but it's not like we're giving a parcel where they can add multiple units, and, and there's a huge economic gain for, for the developer. That's not the case. This is actually more properly aligning the street. And Don, if you'd like to add something?
Sure, yeah. The 50% is a standard. I even checked some other municipalities and what they had in their code. And it's also a standard practice generally for easements as well. But the why behind it might be difficult to find, it's, but it's, it's an industry standard, basically. So they did offer, they, they had an appraisal, and they were only offering 14,000 on the application, but we came back and said, our code, you know, generally insinuates that we should be going for 50% of the appraised value. So $23,000 would be what we, we would recommend accepting.
I just, I just think it's interesting that there is a state law that says municipalities should sell property. And I know you, we didn't necessarily buy it, but we should sell it at half of its appraisal.
Part of it's, I think, I believe part of it is because, I can't say for sure, is that the use is limited generally in those cases, then, but there might be more. We could, we could look up like Paul said, so.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. I just drove by that, you know, looking at a map is one thing, but I drove by that parcel. And the buildings on that look like they meet historic, our historical building criteria as far as age. If not, they're really close. So my question would be, are they doing anything to move and preserve that building? Or where are we with that possibility? And maybe we should consider that before we give a street vacation if it does meet the historical qualities.
So if, there are requirements, permitting requirements, if there is a historic building on the property. So they would be required to do the process if there, if they are indeed historic. So there's a process to work with. I believe it's the Landmark Board and to explore options for the property, so.
So do we know if the building meets those, that criteria, or if they've started that process?
I do not know. I don't know.
Just to, I guess, put this in perspective, this is, for tonight's purposes, it's simply approving a resolution to establish a public hearing at which an ordinance would be passed. And that, the date set already in the ordinance, I'm sorry, in the resolution would be for June 6th. So these are questions that staff can research in the interim and be, be prepared to present on June 6th.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this item or motion? Councilmember Feen?
Great, Don. It seems to me making, it makes sense to vacate a right-of-way if a development is taking two different properties, and then there's a road that's dividing them, and they're pulling it together. But it seems odd to me to take a right-of-way that is along an existing, fully-used right-of-way, which is Northeast 185th Street. One of the thoughts that I have, which has been a concern of Councilmember Sandberg's in the past, is we do have buses that are running up and down that road. And taking away right-of-way that adjoins that already crowded right-of-way, I think, potentially further puts pressure on that road. I like the idea of having a little bit of breathing room, maybe a green space, even though it's just a sliver, or I say a spike, whatever it might be. So I have concerns about taking a position that we would vacate a right-of-way that I, as I said, that joins a currently used right-of-way, that otherwise could be a benefit to the city. So, I mean, have we done vacations of right-of-way? I don't believe we have in the last 12 years, at least.
It hasn't been very often at the City of Bothell, that's correct. But the, this particular segment doesn't align with the right-of-way. It looks like it was done along a section line instead, and it's, we did look at the future 185th corridor with the, the bus route, and took all that into consideration before we said that we were willing to look at it, so.
So I see it aligning with the right-of-way, because if you're coming from the east driving west, this could be a right-hand turn lane to get out of the line of otherwise the, a bus or cars coming behind you, because we all know that the capacity or the density of downtown is continuing to grow with the downtown redevelopment, the new residents that are moving downtown, more traffic's going to be present there. To take away potential parking spots that could be there, or in my mind, a right turn from Northeast 185th, that would be clearing out that travel lane, I think would be a, a project that I could support. So at this point, I don't see that it would be a good idea to vacate this right-of-way. I understand it could be a benefit to the property owner, but to the city, I don't see the benefit for our citizens.
We, we did look at, I mean, we had our transportation engineers look at it, and they weren't considering a right turn in this, in that area.
Maybe not, maybe not today, but maybe in the future, in 15 to 20 years, that might be a good idea, as the population continues to grow in Bothell. Getting back right-of-way is as near impossible. So, all right, thanks, Don.
Sure.
Okay, so is there a motion on this item? Deputy Mayor?
I have to find the, I move to approve the resolution establishing a public hearing date of June 6th, 2017 for a street vacation petition for the corner of 103rd Avenue Northeast and Northeast 185th.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Agnew to approve a resolution establishing a public hearing date of June 6th, 2017 for a street vacation petition for the corner of 103rd Avenue Northeast and Northeast 85th Street. Would you like to speak to your motion?
So I happen to know a little bit about the historic value of this property, because it came to Landmark Board while I was on it. We were asked if we wanted to save it. It's basically falling apart. The Landmark Board felt that the value of that particular property was such that no one would, would take it and renovate it, because it has been so neglected. And so that's what we did on the Landmark Board, was ask them to take photographs and, and potentially put some sort of board together or something, noting what used to be there, the history of it, so the public would have some idea of, of what was there before, as they go forward with this project. And regarding the right-of-way, it looks to me like the right-of-way on the other side of the street is along the, the road. So I don't, I don't really know it would be accomplished by not giving them this piece. I know affordable housing, we talk about all the time. It looks like townhomes are going to go in there. Those are affordable housing. Those are, you know, first houses for a lot of couples and, or, you know, single people. And they're last houses sometimes for people as they downsize when their kids are gone. So I support the resolution.
Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm going to be voting no on the motion. I feel like I need to have more information. I think the point about the 185th being a major transit corridor is a concern. I'd, I'd like to know, I'd like to see, you said that the traffic engineers have looked at this. I'd like to see an overlay of the planned improvements on 185th as it relates not to just this property, but the whole corridor. I mean, we might not have a right-hand turn lane, but we might need, have a need for bus pullouts. You know, that 185th is just very, very constrained width-wise for all the things that we would need to fit on that. And I, I feel like I would like more information before I, I approve moving forward with the pro, with the, with the resolution, because it does create a, an expectation that we will eventually sell this property to this applicant.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I won't be supporting the motion either. I actually am looking at the Bothell apartment site that's right across the way from it. I mean, it looks like there's going to be quite a bit of development on there. So I'd be interested in finding out a little bit more information on how that right-of-way could be used, or potentially may have to be used in the future. So I'm, I'm supportive of getting more information on it.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Feen?
I kind of already discussed it, but the idea of a bus pullout was one that I hadn't. So Councilmember Sandberg, I appreciate your thoughts on that. Again, a vacating property that is joining a right-of-way like this, that is very much used, I think, I don't have interest in it. That's why I don't think we need to schedule a public hearing to consider it further. And again, everybody knows that I am a real estate developer investor, and buying land at 50% value is attractive to people. I just don't see that for the citizens of Bothell, this is something that benefit to them. I wish the homeowner or the property owner success, but I don't think this is a good avenue to go, particularly at this point.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. So the motion on the floor is to approve a resolution establishing a public hearing date of June 6th, 2017 for a street vacation petition for the corner of 103rd Avenue Northeast and Northeast 185th. Any further discussions? Seeing none, place your vote. Fails with four to three with myself, the Deputy Mayor, and Councilmember Agnew in the affirmative. I think we're done then? Or would you like further direction?
No, I don't, I don't. So the item was just to set the hearing date, and the hearing date would have been the opportunity for the applicant to come and provide you all the information, and for us to discuss why this property could, should or could be sold. And so now you voted no, and so I'm not quite sure. I heard some say, no, you're not interested at all, and others saying more information. So the avenue to bring you the information was the public hearing. And so I'm not really sure, I, I guess I have to go back and talk to staff and determine how we would bring something forward to you if you didn't want to have a public hearing on it. So I, I don't have an answer for you. I'm not quite sure what, I'm not quite sure what the no vote means, so.
But means no pub, the council does not want to have a public hearing.
Right. But I heard some council members saying they wanted more information, so there's no vehicle for me to bring, I have to, I don't know if I'm supposed to bring it back and, and have a discussion about it, because that's what the public hearing was. So am I hearing no? It's dead?
So does, is, is the council interested in hearing about this some more, outside of a public hearing format?
I would be in support of a amended agenda bill that gives us additional information that has been requested up here.
I would be in support of that as well.
Councilmember Spivey?
I would support a brief study session where we get all the information.
Councilmember Feen?
And I stated in my comments that I don't support the idea of this property being vacated, and I don't need to have a public hearing to hear any more information. My decision is clear.
I think you got direction then? Or do you need to hear from me? Yes, I would like to hear more about this in a study session.
Well, the study session's not the proper format. We'd bring it back in another, just another agenda item, and, and I guess provide you more. We'd have to, I'll have to talk to staff.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, the other item pulled from consent, eight, 10, and nine, is AB 17-074, and I think it was Councilmember Sandberg, nope, Councilmember Agnew. Go ahead.
How you doing, Chief?
I'm good.
Had to talk to you at least one more time before you left. My question was, we're dealing with Snow One now, we're getting away from Dr. Parker, is that what I'm reading in here?
It's both Dr. Parker and Nurse Practitioner Lynn that operates out of a Snow One facility. So we have two providers.
Okay, and does he do the exact same types, physicals?
My understanding is they're a little bit different. They, they have different emphasis. Dr. Parker, as I understand it, is more sports-type medicine, where Dr. Lynn gets more into blood work and understands that. So it gives, it gives the, and we have members of the department who like both of them for different reasons. So we thought, let's give them an option as to what provider they'd like to go to.
Do you know if Nurse Practitioner Lynn does stress treadmills?
I don't know that.
Because I, I think that's one of the key things that we want to see in these. And, and I speak from experience, I had a lieutenant that if he hadn't taken that, they would have never diagnosed his left anterior descending or widowmaker, and he wouldn't have survived.
Yeah.
So, you know, and as in-depth as we can get, I, I would appreciate it. I understand it is going to be a little less costly, but as long as there's meticulous, I wouldn't have an issue with that at all.
Sure. And we could, we can clarify certain tests that we would like to have our firefighters undergo also, so.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move the recommended action with the chief emphasizing the lab results that he'd like to see at the end of the exam.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to approve the inter-local agreement with Snowmush County Fire District One for firefighter physicals, sort of as presented, but to have the chief do what? And get the information, the additional thorough information, or?
Yeah, just identify some of the procedures that we'd like seen done during the physical, to make sure that both physicals are the same.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously, and we are now on to New Business, AB 17-076. It's an update on the status of Block A, and I believe the city manager has the floor.
I do. I have a very brief presentation. So on March 31st of this year, 2017, the purchase and sale agreement for Block A between the city and WRES expired. The sale price was $1,007,005, and we had a holdback of $200,000 to partially compensate for the installation of pilings. It's a, it's a difficult lot to be able to build on. It was for a minimum of 24 for-sale condominiums. With the, with that purchase and sale agreement having expired now, I'm generally under the direction to sell that piece of property, but I thought it was an opportunity to come back to the full council and make sure that that's still what you wanted to do. There's been a lot of changes, there's been a lot of growth in the downtown, and so I thought the opportunity just to take a pause and make sure that was still the direction of the council, would be just to sell the property, continue with the sale. There are some interested parties in that property. We did a new appraisal on the parcel, the value's about the same, and so we haven't seen a lot of increase since we negotiated that agreement. And so that would be one option, is to go back and put it back on the market to the, to the private sector, and have the, the private market determine what's best on that parcel. But I also offered you two other opportunities for your consideration, and there might be more that you think of. A second one would be to direct staff to look at an RFP process, where we would put specific criteria in place of things that the council would be interested in seeing on that part, on that property. Maybe some sort of public-private partnership, certain things for the community that you'd like to see happen on that parcel. And that's something we could put together and bring back for your consideration. And the third one was some sort of initiative that would include private sponsors, and maybe building something on the parcel that was good for the community, that, that private individuals would be interested in contributing to, and, and having some sort of community center, or some sort of community activity on that parcel. The city does own the property around the parcel, and so when you look at the diagram that's in the staff report, we own all the way around the side and all the way to the river, and so sort of a sea surrounding that parcel. So it's more than just the actual parcel that was for sale. I've done absolutely no research on what could be built on that parcel, how far we can go towards the river, how much outside of the, the bounds of that, what's drawn in your staff report we can go, because I haven't wanted to put any staff time into anything unless I got direction that council was interested in something other than just putting the, the parcel back on sale, back for sale to the private market. And so I didn't want to take any staff time unless I got direction to do otherwise. And so if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but it's really an opportunity for the council to have a discussion about the future of this parcel, and then giving me direction on how you'd like me to move forward.
Great, thank you. Would anybody like to start the discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Spivey?
Thank you. I guess this might be a question for Tammy, is how integral in our financial planning was the sale of this property versus if we were to, say, keep it and build something for, that some of the speakers here might enjoy?
Well, the property was, I think it was originally on the market for about $1 million. That property has a location that probably has value to the community over the long term. And if we wanted some type of community infrastructure and had to go out and find land to do that, we wouldn't, certainly it wouldn't be near the park that we already own, or the other property. own or the other property around it that we own. So it, it's an opportunity for the council to make that decision as to whether or not they want to move forward with selling it or consider keeping it for public use.
I guess more importantly, that, that's great, but we laid out a financial plan that included selling all of our surplus property. How key is this as part of that plan?
Right now, we have $8 million in cash sitting aside to make payments on this building and we have two other properties that will be sold towards that purpose as well. We have spent down or will spend down $1 million towards the new IS or IT infrastructure over the next two years. So I would say we still have our house payment made out until about 2022. So a million dollar loss. If you looked at that over the long term and considered the fact that in the future, if we wanted to add any public infrastructure for the community in that area, that land is going to be a lot more than $1 million.
So it would have great value.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm trying not to make a decision for you, but I absolutely see the economic sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I absolutely support that.
Great, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So I just wanted a little clarity on the difference between options two and three.
Option two would be a structured request for proposals. So the council would say, we would be interested in sometime, some type of private-public partnership and we would like this kind of activity, we would like these kinds of services and the city would be willing to put in, let's say, the land and lease the land for a dollar. And, and so a business maybe that normally wouldn't pencil if it had to purchase the property could then respond to that RFP and there would be public values. So maybe the building has more public uses, it has more open space, it has more things that serve the community for free rather than a business being 100% for someone's own clients. And so there would be this public-private partnership and we would decide the criteria to be able to do that. Maybe what those services are, what those kinds of things look like, the clientele it might serve. The third one would be more an initiative that the city would take on and the city would say, we want to have some sort of a community center, we want to have some sort of activity, we want to have some sort of, something there that's a city building that, that, that then we would, we would start an initiative and, and look for donors, basically sponsors to, to contribute towards the building of a building or the operations of a building or both. And so it's, it's a little bit different. One is more structured and really looks for a public-private partnership. The other is much more city-driven and, and we would then start that initiative and it would be a much longer haul because it would be something driven by staff and by the council, working then with community partners, more, more private sponsors to make something happen. So that's kind of the difference.
So if we wanted a skate park, in the first scenario, it potentially would be a business that has the skate park or we could break off that piece of land and another area would be?
Well, if you wanted a skate park, that's, that's more a city function. I mean, if you just wanted to say, look, we just want to build a skate park there, that would be a, a little bit more like option three because we would need to get some, some support. So if there are some donors out there that would help us put that skate park back together, maybe make improvements, get the property ready, we would need some assistance to be able to do that. So it would be more of a city project and we would look for sponsors to help us do that.
Okay, because I, I guess in thinking through, I mean, I've thought about a skate park before and I, it seems like a natural fit would also be some sort of community center or Boys and Girls Club or some sort of amenity that would go along with the skate park. And so it sounds like option three would be the one that would be a better fit for that type of scenario.
Probably yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Agnew?
And to steal my brother's thunder, be a great place for a Boys and Girls Club to start. Just saying. You, maybe a little skate park for you guys? Option three.
Councilmember McNeil?
Well, my thunder got stolen. Thank you for your presentation. It was fabulous to hear from you guys. I just wish more of you guys would come and talk to us about the things that you really want and to be a part of your community. So it's special to hear you guys speak. I'm very supportive of programs like this for youth of all ages and I think that it gives us a great opportunity if we have the financial ability to do it, but it also gives us the ability to partner with other organizations similar to what Bellevue, the city of Bellevue has done with the Bellevue Boys and Girls Club, with the YMCA and other organizations that can partner with us to make this come to fruition so that we can possibly have a skate park and other amenities for other kids that do other things, you know, maybe music or something like that. So I am very supportive. I would actually lean towards option two and three. I would not want to lock ourselves in. I would like to give us a little bit broader ability to do maybe a few different things depending on who comes to the table. I'm learning that Fettera, which is instrumental in, in us with Wayne Golf Course, is working on other projects outside of just specific land conservation. Might be able to partner with them as well on this. I know there's funding available through King County right now, which is for youth activities, which would potentially help get this skate park up a little bit quicker for us. So I'm very, I'm very hopeful that we can make this work and, and I'm hoping that my colleagues here on the DIAS will, will support this as well. So I, I think this would be a fabulous opportunity for us, so thank you.
Councilmember Freed?
Great, well, there used to be a very successful business that sat on this site and the building still exists, Bothell Bike and Ski. Sadly, Bothell Bike and Ski is now in Kinmore, but still retain the name, Bothell Bike and Ski. But having a business like that back, there was a gentleman who represents Gerk's, which is a very popular bike establishment in Issaquah, came to our meeting just a little while ago, had a chance to talk to him during break and he and Gerk's, he expressed would have great interest in having a location in Bothell. So if there is an opportunity to expand the boundaries of this property, like you said, city manager, stretch out if we own the property, potentially sell off a portion of it, have a Bothell Bike and Ski or a Gerk's type business there and allow the remainder of it to be a skate park, I think that would be a fantastic opportunity. We would have a revenue opportunity in the city. Maybe it's not $1.7 million, maybe it's a half a million dollars, but it's still revenue that we could use and that revenue potentially could be put into a skate park. I've been a skater all, much of my life. I actually took my skateboard to the Great Wall of China and skateboarded all over the, Pakistan when I was a kid. I own Arbor Longboard right now. I have Day One with Thunder Trucks and Bone Wheels. I don't know if you guys share ownership like that, but yes, I've been a boarder for a long time. And I, they're in my office today and my kids come and ride them when they come to the office and I ride them up and down the, the hall. So I'd love to have a skate park back in Bothell again. Woodinville has a gorgeous one. Would love to have something like that. I don't want to reuse the dangerous stuff that we used to own. I think that there's technology that has significantly improved that we could have on this location. It makes a lot of sense. It's right by the road. We're not going to maybe put a nice quiet park there that people are going to sit in benches, but something of more activity with skate, skateboarders there that we can drive by and see that fun activity. I think that is a great entrance to our downtown. So my idea would maybe be in a turn of option three or a new option four. That would be a revenue opportunity with selling off a portion of an extended par, expanded subdivided parcel and keeping the balance of the parcel for a skate park.
Councilmember Samberg?
I had some of the similar concerns that councilmember Spivey had, which is essentially, can we forego the revenue from, if we do not sell this property? And what I heard from our finance director is that we have $8 million in cash now to pay off City Hall. We're expecting some additional revenue from the sale of other properties, but we have an annual lease payment of about $3.3 million for, I forget how many, 22 years left, maybe? So, and then we've also talked about somehow tapping that cash to buy Wayne Golf Course, that, that's a, that's a pile of cash sitting around that, you know, we have a, we have a deadline to purchase Wayne Golf Course. So I am concerned about whether or not we can afford not selling this property. And then also recognizing that if we, if we do keep it in, in public ownership, not only are we foregoing the sale price, but we're also foregoing ongoing revenue. And so I had a similar thought with what councilmember Freed said, which was, because I was thinking, well, do we need the entire almost 40,000 square feet for a skate park? Well, no, we could carve out, I mean, I, I would imagine a, could get a pretty good skate park for 20,000 square feet and, and look at some of low-intensity retail that can generate ongoing revenue. So I think we can look at it with that dual purpose of a little bit for the community, a little, I mean, in terms of a skate park, a little bit for revenue generation, which is also a community benefit if, if it was a park-oriented retail establishment. I am really concerned and I hope that when we, if we move forward these discussions, that we maintain right-in, right-out access only for the, that parcel. We've had people interested in the parcel and want to add a left act, left turn access to it and I think that that's, that would just seriously degrade the traffic flow on 522. So I think recognizing that it's a constrained parcel that, and then maybe we can do whatever, whatever option that is, that kind of melding of public and private use on that parcel. But I, I would like to know more about the, the financial impact of foregoing that $1 million sale, if, if that's what it, you know, roughly $1 million. And think about that because we're, we're going to be having conversations, you know, in a few months about disposition of Wayne Golf Course, how we're going to approach Shelton View Forest, budgetary impacts and constraints that were already identified at the beginning of this year. So those, those, all those issues are, are important to me.
Okay, so I haven't had a chance to talk. I, I like the idea of doing a public-private partnership on the property. Item number two seems, I'm more interested in that, but I'd hate to have you guys bring us a rock and then we tell you, tell you we don't like the rock and have you keep coming back. So it seems like maybe where I'm at is a kind of a thing in between three and two, where we do have a little more discussion about what is it? Kind of a visionary discussion about what is it or is not there that, or what are the options that we can have there? And then do item number two. Because it just says, you'll draft, you'll bring us a rock and then you're going to present it to us and you're going to get feedback and we're going to issue it. And I just worry about that process in the past and how we'll probably have to have you come back anyways and discuss it again. So just out of the gate, it seems like it would be nice to have some support from staff to, to give us a more comprehensive discussion about the property and what it can or can't do. I don't know what the slopes are, I don't know what it, what's possible there or not, I have no idea. So to say whether or not I would want a Boys and Girls Club there is, I, I just don't, I just don't know if it could even be, you know, something you could construct on that property. So I'd like to know a little more about the property. I don't know if we have rights to the information that was done looking at the property by the previous buyer, but I would like to see that and see what the issues were so we don't try to do a whole bunch of engineering or design into something that's infeasible.
So this is a good topic for a study session and it'll, it won't come for a little while because we've got a pretty huge workload, but, but this gives me the direction. The most important thing what I'm hearing is, don't put it on the market right now. Don't put it back on the market. And let's give us some time. I'll bring it back maybe in the fall when we get some, some breathing room and, and bring you back more information about the opportunities and the potential for that site.
One, one other thing, I think the buyer was going to remove that building because we have some issues with trying to keep it, people out of it and keeping, maintaining it and that type of thing. Is there desire, can we take that building down so it's less of a hazard?
I think so. I can certainly look into that.
With our existing budgets and all that?
We'll look into it.
Okay. All right, I think we're, oh no, we have the executive session. So that's the end of our agenda, but we need to go into an executive session, turn to RCW 4230-110G, which is a city manager performance review. It's scheduled for 30 minutes, so we don't plan to come back to the DIAS. So it'll be an executive session and then we'll be adjourned.